Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to switch us over?
I can do that.
All right. Morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 13th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our word for the day is Proverbs 30 verses 5 and 6. Every word of God proves true; he is a shield to all who come to him for protection. Do not add to his words, or he may rebuke you and expose you as a liar. And you're going to... Somebody want... We need room audio.
I don't deal with the audio.
We don't deal with audio.
Ernie's here.
Ernie, room audio.
I can see they got some somebody's.
The microphone's on.
Microphone's on.
He said okay? All right.
Good morning. Today we have a great Christmas present for somebody. Six-month-old pit mix, kennel number 10. He's about six months.
Lots of energy.
He's available on the 16th. He was found wandering around Sheffield Lake and brought in by a citizen. We have 31 other dogs out there, so come see us. Thank you very much and have a good holiday, everybody.
Oh, he's sweet.
Ms. Clerk?
We're going to go right into our presentation, so Kathy Kern, Mental Health Board.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name's Kathleen Kern. I'm the Executive Director at the Lorraine County Board of Mental Health, and I wanted to start just by thanking you for allowing me to present today in request for the Mental Health Board's request to be on the ballot in May of 2018 for a five-year renewal levy. And I do have a PowerPoint. Okay.
Good job.
Well done.
Sometimes technology works.
So I will keep this brief. It's just some very general information about our board and about our request for the levy. So this is information that obviously you know. Our board is run by volunteer leaders. We have 18 of them, six who are appointed by the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, and 12 that are appointed by the Commissioners. This is information about exactly what we do, and I... It kind of always bears repeating because whenever I talk to people about the work at the Mental Health Board, people assume that we are treating patients or serving clients. And really, we have three fundamental roles. Our roles are to, number one, identify the mental health needs in the community; number two, to fund community mental health agencies and other partners to meet those needs; and then, number three, our role is to go back and make sure through audits and outcomes that those investments met the community need, so we don't provide direct service. This is just kind of a very brief overview of some of the things that I think our board members should be proud of. First, we've allowed for there to be access to care. And in the 10 years that I've been at the Board, there has not been a time when if somebody in this community needed a mental health assessment or counseling, they could not access that. We pay very close attention to waitlist information and make sure that access to those services are available. The Mental Health Board funds crisis services upwards of 13,000 calls a year of people who are in psychiatric crisis, and recently added a warm line in recognition that sometimes people just need someone to talk to. They're not necessarily in such crisis that they need hospitalization, but they might just need a friendly voice. So we added the warm line last year, and they've already fielded upwards of 1,000 calls. We did increase access to care through the use of the Navigator. So what I've mentioned is that we've created a system where there typically is access to care, but there were still people in our county who needed mental health services and weren't getting it. And part of that is because it can be a little complex to navigate the system. So we created one number that anybody who's not in a crisis can call, talk to a social worker, get an idea of what kind of services would be most helpful. She references the waitlist, so she can also connect you to services that are most easily and quickly accessible, keeps you on the line, and makes that connection to the agency. And I think that was a really needed service in terms of bridging the connection between people who need service and the services that are available. We've done a lot of work in schools. I think we have community mental health clinicians in every district at this point. We've dramatically increased our attention to children in crisis and have reduced the unnecessary psychiatric hospitalization of children by over 30 percent. And we've expanded training to community members, and that includes general community members as well as specific training for educators, police officers, first responders. This is just a little bit about who we serve. Bottom line is, in terms of clinical services, about 11,000, almost 12,000 people are served in the community mental health network, roughly the same amount of men and women, and usually it's about three-quarters adults who are served and 25 percent youth. So this graph shows sort of the unfortunate reality in terms of the funding that our board receives. What you'll note on the graph, the green is the local funds that we receive from the levy, the blue is the federal funds, and the red is the state funds. In 2012, there was a change such that Medicaid, which used to be funneled to the county boards to dispense to community agencies when they received, when they provided services for somebody with Medicaid, that changed. And now, community mental health agencies directly get that funding from the state. So it was passed through money, both federal and state money that came through to the boards and was passed out to fund Medicaid. Now that Medicaid funding comes directly through the state. And I think that was done in preparation for a move that is upcoming, which will be the change to manage Medicaid. So right now, agencies who provide services to a Medicaid client bill one funder Medicaid, and they get paid within two weeks. As of July, there'll be six different managed Medicaid companies with different rules and regulations and billing requirements, so the community mental health agencies will have to navigate that come July of 2018. But the bottom line here is really, we are 100 percent reliant on local funds. Without local funds, we have no mental health system. This is just a little bit, a small piece about where our funds go. One of the things I'd like to note here is that 85 percent go to client care. That's basically our fundamental purpose and where our investments lie. I would also mention that in terms of board administration, that is not just covering administration. That is helpful to board staff. That includes the coverage and the payment for services such as Gathering Hope House, which provides a drop-in center for people who have severe and persistent mental illness so that they can engage in meaningful activities. Also, the Amy Levin Center, which is open to the public, and thus far, last year, provided there were over 250 community trainings and educational offerings from the community and from the Mental Health Board at the Amy Levin Center. And so that 85 percent that goes to client care, this is kind of what it looks like. There's a large proportion that goes to what we call clinical services, so that's your psychiatry counseling, group counseling, CPST. A large proportion that goes to funding the residences of people who are so impaired by mental illness that they require that level of support. Those are expensive processes, but they are absolutely necessary for someone to have the level of assistance and support that they need to remain in the community. We've increased our focus on prevention, including early childhood mental health, and more community and police engagement and education. And what's the other one? The crisis and the hospitalization obviously takes a big portion of our funds. These are a list of the agencies that we fund, and really, the difference is, the ones on the left, probably you've seen a lot of these agencies and worked with them yourselves. The ones on the left are the ones that are certified by OMS in order to provide community mental health services. And the ones on the right aren't... They provide services that don't need to be certified, so like ambulatory care to make sure that people can get to the hospital in a psychiatric emergency, or blessing house so that children have a safe place to stay when their parents are in crisis. Those are services that we think supplement the network and the continuum of care that we can offer. And that concludes my presentation. My predecessor told me that it was very important to keep this short, but if there's any questions...
Charlie said that?
He's a good teacher.
Absolutely open to any questions you might have.
I'm open to the five-year. That'll be fine, and then we'll address the board needs first of the year to make sure we have a full staff for you.
Terrific. Thank you, Commissioner.
I just wanted you to elaborate a little bit more on how your funding streams have changed. You know, we always hear such good talk out of Columbus. I know people always say there's Lundie being, you know, political and partisan again, but the reality is, since 2012, it looks like you went from 10 million from the state down to just over a million dollars. Correct?
10 million from the state to a million? No, that's not correct. I don't think we've... Let me look at that.
It's the Medicaid payment.
Your Medicaid payment.
It's redirection.
Yeah, so the Medicaid payment...
Right.
It was a pass-through. Initially, it was coming through us, and we'd match Medicaid, and now they just go directly to the state for that. So it's actually, on the graph, it looks like it's a dramatic change, but it was passed through money to begin with.
But the important point is, without local support, it'd be very difficult for you to deliver these services.
Absolutely. And you do see a bit of a reduction in local support specifically related to, I think there was a change in the personal property tax in 2005 that was implemented over time. So we lost a million dollars in local support as a result of that. But, you know, we continue to advocate with the state, but really depend completely on the local funds.
Talk a little bit about the youth of today. We see too much in the way of youth suicides. I know I had a chance to attend a presentation that you and Elaine made, that survey you do of students each year. It is just so alarming how many of the youth in our county will self-report that they've actually thought about suicide.
Absolutely. It's a great point. It's a situation that unfortunately is only getting worse, not only in Lorraine, but in the state and the country. But some of the statistics that I think are most alarming is that when we look at sixth graders, and this is kind of a representative sample, not just, you know, urban or rural, it's a representative sample of all of Lorraine, and the sixth graders, 7 percent of them said that they attempted suicide. Not that they thought about it, but they attempted suicide in the year prior to the survey. And that was an increase from 6 percent two years ago. And additionally, in addition to suicide, you know, I was alarmed to see that more than a third of 10th graders said they were so depressed that it impacted their ability to do things for more than two weeks. You know, as a clinician, we call that clinical depression, and that's what our students are kind of walking around with. So when you think about the implications of that on how they're going to perform academically and socially and vocationally eventually, it really requires a ton of attention. And I think a different way of thinking about what we need to do for our students to be prepared for success, we have to pay attention to the mental health.
So what's causing this? I mean, is it the social media? They see how everybody else is living their life? Is it the breakdown of the nuclear family, economic struggles?
You know, it's a complex picture for sure, and I think all of the things that you mentioned are relevant. We know that people who are going to manifest mental health concerns have a combination of, like, a genetic predisposition. If your parents had depression, you're more likely to have it, right? But one of the things that I think is changing is the environmental stressors that our children experience. So the inability to turn off negative messages that are coming at them 24/7 on their cellphone, the inability to turn off the fact that you can now, you know, it used to be if you were home alone on a Friday night, you probably didn't feel great, but you also weren't bombarded with pictures of your friends who are doing lots of fun things that you're being left out of. So there's a lot of messages that help people to feel excluded and alienated, and less of an ability to figure out how to cope with those. You know, I don't know that we do the best job that we could in terms of preparing students to cope well with some of the adversity that we're not going to be able to change. We're probably not going to be able to change social media to the extent that it'd be healthy for kids. So I think our work at the Mental Health Board and as a community is really helping parents and their student and their children understand that we need to build resilience in these students, because the stressors are getting larger, and if we don't build those protective factors, the stressors are going to overcome their ability to cope.
I would just ask, I just think it's really important if you can, you know, look at, as you shift your resources around, that more of the money go towards the youth. You know, we talked about this before. You and I've had this conversation where, you know, when the kids are in school, they're in that environment, they're around their friends and everything else, and that's fine, but they're more likely to think about suicide or even to get in trouble when they're in the evenings or on the weekends, but especially during the summertime, you know, when there's not that controlled environment of somewhat with going to school every day. So I think, you know, if we can look at programming that hopefully addresses the students when they're away from school, but especially during the summer, when they're totally away from a school environment, and they still need that kind of support mechanism.
Support and structure. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve this to go on the ballot?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie? Aye.
Okay, now we have a...
The amending the tax increment financing of Barrington Park subdivision in Township.
Good morning, Board. Thank you. This is a little different, wearing the glasses.
Yeah.
Can't see ya.
Are they cheaters?
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Today, I'm here to talk a little bit about a proposed amendment to tax increment financing district that was first created by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners to assist Barrington Estates in Eaton Township with some public improvements to allow that development to move forward. The major development there that the TIF was to be used for was for the installation of a turning lane on State Route 57, providing for adequate access and safety. The project unfortunately started just before the crash, and so the development of the TIF was way below what anyone would have anticipated at the time that this was being looked at to produce. We've gone beyond 10 years, and so the TIF has expired, and there is still several phases to go. What we are proposing is to go ahead and for the area that never was developed but is currently going to be developed as part of the original plan, is to expand, or not expand, but to reintroduce the TIF to that area. This was based upon conversations with legal counsel, Virginia Benjamin, to be able to continue to reimburse the developer for the costs that he has had. This will not impact any existing homeowners as far as the cost that they would be paying in real estate taxes. With the TIF, this would be simply a redirection. Today is really a chance to provide some information, to answer questions, and then after today, we will be providing formal public notice to the school district, as well as coming forward with a resolution to this board next year.
Do letters go out to the property owners in that area?
We sent letters out to 18 property owners that are involved of the 18 properties. 17 are people, actual homeowners, that would be potentially impacted by this.
I did get a phone call, and I referred them to you. Somebody had called, and in that letter, it said that they had an opportunity to opt out, and I wasn't sure.
By statute, they do have the opportunity to opt out of the TIF if they're going to enter into a TIF with another jurisdiction, the township in this case. So that really is not an option that's on the table, but by statute, it is one of their rights. It's just not a practical one.
How much is left on the turning lane?
There is a current about 225,000. We have paid to date about 140,000.
And there's no additional funds remaining in the TIF? That's all we've generated?
We've been, correct. We've been flushing out the account as money comes in and reimbursing the developer. The developer's been paying the interest and carrying the costs on this.
I remember when the recession came, that we had that turning lane issue. And the anticipated revenue from a renewed TIF?
Should more than accomplish it, I'm projecting that within about six years, we'll be able to generate the necessary 141... $179,000 that would still need to come to the developer to pay off the debts.
Now, the additional land where I don't see any build right now, is that going to be built out?
Yes, there is actually a... There are some houses that are up that would be impacted from Phase 7. The developer is also before the Planning Commission on Phase 8, and I believe there are two more phases the way this is being developed. So there's still multiple years of development going. Mr. Yost, Dale Yost is the development company. They are doing about 15 houses now a year, so it's picked up quite a bit. We're going for 75 percent 10 years, just in case there is a slowdown, so that we can ideally accomplish everyone's goals and objectives here.
Yeah, because I mean, I'd like to see the TIF end earlier. If we could identify future parcels that are going to be built, and then we could have the TIF come in on the future parcels. If they're building 15 a year, we could end this thing pretty quick, get that turning lane paid for, and be out of this.
Right. And I'm optimistic that that will occur, and what we have done is, we're not... We didn't expand the area beyond what the original TIF contemplated or beyond that development, so we're staying within those confines, and that will accomplish our goal so long as we don't fall off the face of the earth again.
So the parcels that are being... Is it all these parcels, or they're being re-tiffed, or just the ones that are shaded?
Just the ones that are shaded. Those that are in the white are either already contributing to TIF or have completed the years, the 10 years. Again, this is a TIF that goes back to '07.
Well, what happened was the development just stalled during the recession. So my question is, again, if additional parcels are built that aren't identified, do they automatically pay into the TIF?
Yes, so long as they're within that shaded area.
The larger shaded areas.
Which is correct. And that's where the future subdivisions will go, and then as soon as the last payment is made, we would shut down the TIF.
Right. Thank you.
Need a motion? No? Just an update?
Next year, right?
Yep.
I'll see you in January, I hope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Under Resolution Number 1, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorized various personal actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners. Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have some potential hires, but I work on my sheet. I wish to discuss with the Board, job family services, workforce development, some appointments at the CIC we need to discuss. Update on our contract negotiations with a couple of the bargaining units out at the Sheriff's Department. One legal matter, and I'm still working on the purchase of a piece of real estate. I need to update you on. I think that may be it. I want to make it a short session. We're getting ready to go into the holidays. So those matters are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting after lunch, which we always eat, we should really say that. We go into executive session and talk about those matters that I've identified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved away the reading of the Minnesota November 28th and December 6th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Authorized County Minister to provide and execute all necessary documents effective December 14 through December 31, 2017, for the year-end close activity, including but not limited to transfers, advances, repayments, appropriations, requisitions, travel, bill, payroll-related transactions, and payments, and all necessary and urgent documents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Authorized County Minister to reallocate residual loan funds to various projects on prorated share basis to be determined.
I need to explain this a little better. You want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We're trying to close out the grant funds for Amherst, which regard to the downtown revitalization. We have some residual funds. I personally don't want to return more than a few pennies to the state, so we're finding a few dollars left. I want to be able to redistribute, reallocate them back into the grants that have been made. I do have one new one here for $994. I want to pass that down. We just got it this morning. Don and his crew have been, you know, really pounding the pavement, trying to exhaust these funds. So you can take a quick look at that. I'm sorry, I don't have multiple copies, but they just got this one complete this morning. There'll be a few thousand dollars. My intention with the support of the Board would be to go back and with those people that exceeded the 50-50 match, which was the minimum requirement, and to reallocate back into those funds and give a little more relief on those grants on a prorated fair basis to help out those people that invested in that downtown area so that we can exhaust those funds locally. We don't quite have that formula all worked out yet. They were really, had their hands on the oars yesterday, said, "Well, relax. Let's just get a general resolution and give us a little breathing room so we don't make any errors in this." And that's what this is. It's a little too general. That's why I wanted to clarify. But this gives me the authority to make sure that that happens before the end of the year.
So do you want me to do this, include this in this one, or you want me to do this separately?
I would like to approve that. You can do it separately. You can do it as part of this. That'll help out with some of the funds, correct, gentlemen? Have I explained it accurately for you? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
And then a work contract to Main Street, Amherst, the amount of $994.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie? Aye.
Authorized salary adjustments for various immunity courts, which reflects the county's two-fifth share. Avon Lake effective retroactive July 1, 2017, for bailiff Mark Hagerdorn, by weekly rate of $471.20. And Clerk Court Kathy Navante, by weekly rate of $752.80. Marine Municipal Court Tom Borowitz, bailiff's last day is 12/31/17. So Genzo Soto, bailiff, will be effective at January 1, 2018, at by weekly rate of $742.96.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Approve the 2018 special revenue annual appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Do we have to...
This is for, like, DD, mental health, and all that stuff, all set?
Okay.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Approve the 2018 general fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
All kinds.[1737.41]
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
As you're aware, we're ending the year, it's gonna be about a six-point-eight million dollar carryover. What we told the taxpayers, we do in regards to the quarter percent sales tax. We are taking care of a lot of our justice system. Additional one-point-three million dollars almost to the prosecutor, sheriff, the coroner, and veteran services. Almost eight-hundred thousand dollars to common pleas, domestic and municipal court attorney fees. And then increase in workforce development, prosecutor four D and four E. So, I mean, I think we carried through on what we said we were gonna do, especially in regards to what's going on, plus funding the other departments in regards to like OSU extension and so forth. So, we will have a four-H program this year, since we're out of the money from the sale of the green acres.
Yeah.
So.
Commissioner, why don't you explain a little bit that if we don't do OSU extension, first of all, you know, they provide, the, the OSU provides quite a bit of array of services, but if we don't fund OSU, there is no four-H.
Correct, there's a minimum amount of money, approximately a hundred and four or five thousand dollars total has to go to OSU extension based on our county size, which gives them matching funds from the state in regards to performing all the services they provide. A lot of our farmers and, you know, agricultural, plus all the programs they also run, but it also makes us, has us, gives us the ability to have a four-H program for our youth in Lorraine County, which in the past has always been subsidized by either friends of Lorraine County who did fundraiser every year, and/or proceeds that we partner with Judge Jim Walther on out of Pro-Pay to direct towards matching that funding. So, and those dollars have basically expired, so it looks like we've got that picked up this year. So, that should make the friends of four-H very happy.
I was watching something recently, and they were talking about four-H, and four-H started as a government entity. It wasn't just like a nonprofit, it started, the government started it. Kind of interesting.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, thank my colleagues and for supporting this. You know, this is one of the things that we run into, and, you know, you scratch your head sometime, and you think, well, OSU, there's all kinds of resources at OSU. And Columbus is certainly holding all the money. You would think that they might be able to step up with more, but they're relying on us. And for anybody who's ever had a chance to experience anything with four-H, it's a, just a tremendous program for the youth in this county. And, you know, it's important for it to continue. You know, obviously, we don't know when the next big bump in the road's going to be. You never know what the future holds. But, but it really, like we were just talking earlier with the mental health board, that, you know, the youth of the community, we just need to do all that we can to, to keep them active and to have programs in place that help them to learn and grow to be responsible adults. And certainly, four-H does that. And so, I think this is certainly important for us to be supportive of that. You know, as far as the other funding increases that we're seeing for the prosecutor, the sheriff, and the coroner, that all goes along with this heroin epidemic that we're facing in the county. It's had a tremendous drain on our, our resources. Folks are just overwhelmed and overworked. And we need to put the resources where they need to be to make the county safe again and to hopefully deal with this serious issue that's facing so many of our families and taking far too many lives.
We were in Columbus, this Commissioner Kallo and I, and Dan Troy, who's the new president of the CCAO.
[mimicking a dog barking].
Yeah. Can you imagine him and Joe Quazura together? Anyways, one of the things that he said, he said it last year, I think, and I heard him say it again this year, and said that the job of the county commissioners is to keep civil, keep things civil and civilization. And without the courts and everything that we do, and the sheriff, and that's basically what it boils down to. And luckily, we do have that little more taxes coming in, or this county would look a whole lot different going into next year, that's for sure, so.
Well, there's still some work we need to do. The budgets are a live process. As you know, some of the departments, we need to look at them. They haven't had any relief since before the recession, when we made the cuts. I'm gonna put a little bit of a bug in your ear. We do need to, in January, look at that, especially some of the small departments. We, we made significant cuts in two thousand eight, two thousand ten, were bigger cuts. And there has been no relief on those departments. The workload has increased in those departments, but the staffing has remained reduced. And there, there's, there's, there's some issues. And, and now that things are stabilizing a bit, we, we have an obligation to go back and, and look at those general fund departments that, that, that may need some assistance. So, while you've kept, you know, the promise of where the funding, initial funding was going to go to shore up the justice system with regard to the coroner and the prosecutors, you know, you can't keep arresting bad guys and not have people to prosecute them. And fortunately, the coroner was down to, you know, too, too much lag time getting to the scene to, to deal with things. There's still other mandatory functions of government that have, you know, been fractured and slowing to a point where the services are barely being provided on, on a quality basis. And we need to look at that, commissioners, it's been too many years and too long. And, and there's several departments that, that have, have, you know, really suffered and continued to work really diligently to produce a quality service to taxpayers. And they're under, they've been under terrible strain, and we, we need to look at that.
Without a doubt, we spoke about that in the past. We've gotten through the first portion of it, which is in regard to the direct service with the sheriff and the prosecutor and the courts. Now, we'll get to the support service and civil services, whatever keeps county government moving. So, that'll be January.
Okay. I had a conversation with an elected official who knows county government quite well, and this person said to me, I just can't believe that you folks have been able to get the work done, you've been able to get done with the bodies that you have, so.
We wondered that at times, too, as commissioners.
Well, it's always a, a living document, a budget, so.
Well, I'm saying that now, sort of, we make some, and I'm not talking about leaps. Talking about small steps to improvement, that people don't think that we did this now and just to fool people, and then we, we made some changes. I'm, I'm putting it out there now, 'cause I'm going to be in your ear in January to start looking at some things. It's necessary, it needs to be done, doesn't need to be huge. But we need to start looking toward that and, and making some of those changes and getting some relief and some additional, probably a few bodies here and there in some of those departments so that we, we can do a better job.
Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Kallo.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Approved and entered a contract with Rahm Hall Engineering and Surveying Company Avon to perform professional surveying, engineering, and inspection services for parking lot improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Kallo.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Approved and entered a contract with Richard Bowen and Associates Inc., Cleveland, to perform architectural and engineering services for exterior improvements at Job and Families.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Kallo.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Approved and entered a contract with Rahm Hall Engineering and Surveying Company Avon to perform professional services pertaining to the parking lot rehab at the Job and Family Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Boy, is this needed.
Well, I'll tell you, Commissioner.
Some of those chuckles could swell your car up.
I, I have to say that I, I thought that we'd be doing this work. We already have performed the work this year, but just what I just said. And I wasn't actually addressing our own departments. I was addressing all the general fund departments when I made the statement about needing relief. But even our own departments, we have so many projects going on right now, and we have so few people. The Job and Family Services work just kinda went slowly, slid to the back burner. I thought we'd be doing all this parking lot work this year. And I also thought we'd be digging around the building. It's my intention to put foot and tile completely around that building. It should have been done when the building was renovated. They didn't do that. That made this job that much bigger. I remember, I remember too many things now, it's time for me to retire. I remember when they renovated the building in the nineties, and they didn't adequately drain the site. It's a very low site, if you look behind it, everything's raised. It's been constant problems in the back of the site. We finally put a big storm sewer back there when I became the administrator to relieve some of those problems. But in the front, the water rose up around the windows. So, in their wisdom, they, they caulked the whole bottom of all the windows to stop the water from coming in the building. And you can't do that. And I tried to explain it to them, but I was only in HR at the time, and I tried to explain to them that you can't, those are weeps on the windows, and you need those weeps. But they, so they, what they basically did was made a fish tank out of the windows, and the water would rise up, and they were trying to seal it out of the building right around the foot of there. So, all that's gotta be dug out, we're gonna put all new drain tile in. It'll come through the parking lot, it'll drain into the, to the storm stumps, sumps in the, in the lot, take all that moisture out from around the footers and around the windows. And we're gonna have to reseat all those windows and get all that caulking out of there. And there's some rot in a couple of the windows and things like that. Do it right.
Which will be reimbursed by the state of Ohio.
It will be.
As our tenant, that's not gonna be one of the general fund expenditures.
And, and we should, we've explained that before out here, but we should explain it again. The, the, the note on the building, the original renovation, has been paid off. The revolving door, moving your Job and Family Services ended a few years ago. Most counties, what they would do is renovate a building, put Job and Family Services in it for ten, fifteen years, and then they would start planning to renovate another building and move their Job and Family Services, 'cause the state would pay for the renovation. They would get a capital asset by doing that, but the state doesn't do that much anymore. But they will allow you to do capital maintenance on your current facility. So, we're taking advantage of that. I wish we had taken, done it quicker, because right now, they're not really paying very much. But once we go to permanent financing on this, they'll be picking up all the cost of all these capital improvements. We did finish the, the roofing and, and the HVAC work and things that are going on up there.
Phone system finished yet?
Yeah.
Is that phone?
I'm not sure it's completely done. I thought I saw Ernie Haye mail it last year.
I didn't know if it was completed yet.
But the, I'm, I'm interested in that myself, because lots to talk about at the end of the year, right? Of course, the county phone system now is twenty years old. I remember working on that RFP in nineteen ninety-seven. The, the, and it's, it's at the end of its service life. It's been at the end of its service life. We've been having critical problems with it, we can't get parts, we can't get anybody to work on it. I've been talking to you for a couple of years. Basically, you guys told me to go away, we don't have any money. They told you to rig up some Dixie cup and string soon, 'cause that's the way you be talking to people. So, I'm using the Job and Family Services work on the system, the phone system, as, as a look to see what we're probably gonna do in the rest of the county. So, I'm very interested in how successful that goes, because that's probably what we're gonna do with the rest of the county, but that's gonna cost a couple of million dollars. Have no choice. Ours is obsolete. It's, it's not as bad as it was in nineteen ninety-seven, when we replaced what was a twenty-year-old system then. We had opened the doors on our cabinets, and we blowing cool air into the cabinets, trying to keep them from crashing and so forth. But right now, the, the problem is the spare parts and the ability to, to have anybody do critical repairs. There's nobody out there anymore that works on our systems, and there's no maintenance support, and there's no software supports. They move, we're already three platforms behind everybody else. I don't like it, but that's the way they, they do things today, so.
Looking at leasing also, right?
Well, probably, we've looked at the leasing issue. We're some, looking at the voice over IP, we're looking at cloud services. So, we'll, we'll see. But it has to be done, and it's coming up pretty rapidly, as you know. And we also have software issues at the Justice Center that the courts are all working on that are coming up pretty rapidly. I know everybody thinks that because of the quarter percent sales tax, that we're, we're out of the, we're out of the woods, but we're not.
I keep warning, I keep warning.
We have a lot of deferred, a lot of deferred issues. I'm trying to redo a lot of repairs. Again, no, no weeps, but walking into them. But we deferred a lot of maintenance, deferred a lot of issues, 'cause we didn't have money to pay for them. But, but they're there, they're not gonna disappear. And let's face facts, all you gotta do is look behind this building, you see the biggest lurking giant in the whole world. And, and that's that parking deck that, that probably by next year, I'm gonna just close off the whole top deck on. It's, 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 it's a disaster waiting to happen. It's passive service life, and they've invested as much as they can in it to get more years out of it, but we have a huge problem we gotta deal with there. You know, I know people don't wanna hear it out there, and nobody wants to pay more. I don't blame them for not wanting to pay more, but unfortunately, these things have to be taken care of. So, we'll be talking a lot next year. Problems haven't gone away. Money fixes things, but there's a lot, a lot more things that still need to be fixed and repaired. Have a lot more projects ahead of us, but we just gotta plan for them and, and go into them as best we can, as we can afford them. But they're not gone.
No.
Sorry.
We have a couple hopeful things. Income, interest income could go up. We might get some more taxes on medical marijuana. Because it's not a food, and it's not a.
Commissioner, I'm more hopeful on the interest income, because that doesn't cost the residents here in Lorraine County anything. The, the bond market is surprised, I'm really shocked at the bond market, how, how bottomed out it's been for so long. We've rode the cycle many times. We, we've seen it dip, and, and during the dip, we usually draw down our carryover, and we, we ride the cycle.
Yeah, we didn't, we don't stay in the gutter, though.
It's been, it's been in the basement more years than I can, I can ever remember. The Chronicle, I don't know if they did a piece, I didn't, I didn't pay attention to the papers, but Brad called me last week, and he wanted to know how much money we didn't receive in local government funding since the cuts have been made to local government over the last few years. I was a little surprised myself. Number was fifty-four million dollars. Now, I didn't know if he did an editorial, he was working on something, I, I don't know what it was. Did anybody see anything in the paper?
I was out of town, I didn't read the paper, so.
You were quoting, I'm trying to remember what the editorial was about, though.
I, I don't remember either.
You were quoted, Chase was quoted.
It was, but it was fifty-four million dollars that we have not received since they began cutting local government funds. That's fifty-four million dollars. It wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't excess funds that we just happened to have laying around. That was fifty-four million dollars in operating funds that somehow the residents of Lorraine County had to make up. You know, that, that, let's face facts, that was, that was a, that was a transfer of cost onto the local community. The, the, they, they simply shifted the dollars, the, the Dallas cost, to the residents of Lorraine County. That used to be bad from the state coffers, coffers, to the local coffers and to the local community. I was a little surprised by the number. You know, we, we get so used to it, we're, we're in, we're inside of it. We hadn't really been adding it up in a while, but it was fifty-four million dollars. At the same time, we, we saw decreases in our interest income because of the, the recession, which the bond market still hasn't really recovered from. I bet you this, that we've seen a similar amount, fifty or sixty million dollars, that we would have materialized in interest income at our peak. And I'm gonna be kind, because we may not have been able to stay at the peak, so let's call it forty million dollars. So, you're somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred million dollars over a decade in revenues.
Out of our control.
That were out of our control, that we would have had to operate government, that now the burden has been placed on the residents here. You cannot cut your way out of a hundred million dollars.
We tried, though.
And, and we don't get a chance to explain that, we don't get a chance to talk about that. Now, the interest income is nobody's fault.
No.
That's the economy. And normally, when interest income's up, we, we try to do our capital improvements, we try to buy deputies new cars, you know, because they were riding around in Freddie Flintstone cars with their, you know, signs bolted to the floor to keep their feet from falling out of them. And we try to do roofs and things like that, and then we don't have interest income. We, we try to make, make do what we got. But when the local government started getting cut. We just, we just had, we had no, no ability to do most anything. And, and so I wish we had a lot of time to spend with folks to explain that to them we had a lot of time to spend with folks to explain that to them and show them that whole cycle of events. But that number was very disturbing to me. I really hadn't added it up in quite a while.
I was looking, you know, we only have, what, $2 million left in local government funds? And I remember thinking, oh my gosh, well, that's the worst that they can do to us, right? $2 million is all we got left. Then they come up with the MCO and take $2 million out of us that way. So.
Well, we haven't, we have two years and then that, that whammy is going to, that comes directly off the top of the, of the quarter percent that was, was, was coming in now. So you've lost 20% of that quarter percent immediately after the first two years. And let's wind back to just before you became commissioners, I think.
No, it was right after. The 5 million and the shifting in population?
And the shift of population. So our, our share of the local government funds, like overnight.
5 million.
Shifted to 5 million. So you, you had a loss of $5 million a year in revenue. Now, the good thing is the revenue didn't leave Lorain County.
Right.
It stayed in Lorain County, but it got distributed out to the cities viced to the counties. So you had to deal with a change. And you guys were criticized then because also your carryover was falling and the prior administration was saying you guys were, you know.
Blowing the money.
Were blowing the money. But you had a $5 million change in your revenue the first year you were commissioners. People don't, they're not putting that, they're not looking at the whole mosaic. And I told you, Commissioner, your first year or two here, I gave you a picture of what the county finances were going to look in seven or eight years. And I think I was fairly accurate.
And I talked about a sales tax in '07 and '08, you know, trying to pre-plan.
So I don't mean to be talking too much, but it's, it's an interesting time with the budgets. So.
Great.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Community Development, Per the Semi-Angel Revolving Loan Fund Report from January 1st, 2017 through June 3, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Proven enter revolving loan fund administration agreement with the State of Ohio Development Services Agency for the term of three years, beginning January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 15841 adopted December 16, 2015, awarding contract Coldwater Consulting LLC for consultant services, including implementation of the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant in Eden Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Job and family authorized various personnel in 2018 to utilize various credit cards not to exceed 4,000. Said usages for work-related expenses, food, transportation, gas and oil, motor vehicle repair and maintenance, conference, telephone and lodging.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Solid Waste, enter contract with Lorain County Health District for 2018 in the amount of $14,166.67 monthly for solid waste enforcement and monitoring services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve MOU with OSU Office for 2018 compost education to be paid in May and November in the amount of $8,700.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve 2018 open dump enforcement agreement with sheriff so the cost not to exceed $199,263.15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve intern of VAR General Engineering Service Agreement for the Sanitary Engineering Department with K. McCarty and Associates in the amount not to exceed $250,000 as part of a 24-month task order. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of the board of prosecutors proposed to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize Lorain County engineer to submit a preliminary application to OPWC for emergency funding to replace the fail culvert on Portman Road in Brownham and Henryia Township. Authorize engineer to execute documents for this application. Local share will be provided by force account and motor vehicle license fees.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Grant sole ownership of K-9 Ben to Deputy Richard Nysenbaum. K-9 Ben has been serving with Deputy since November 11, 2011. And due to his age and performing daily activities, he will retire on December 24. Deputy Nysenbaum will release all claims in agreement to identify a cost of $1.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the prosecutor treasure, accept and generalize injury tack appropriation and expenditure report submitted by Lorain County Treasurer and prosecutor pursuant to ORC 321.261. Revenue generated for 2017 was $499,73.34. 2018 estimate anticipated revenue will be approximately $850,000. Taxation in the prosecutor's office is expected $340,000 and anticipates another $15,000 by the end of the year. Treasurer spent $369,221.93.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez.
Well, I think this is our last meeting of the year. I appreciate all the words, powers you've conferred upon me. If you don't see me next year, I voted myself a huge severance package and left the country. I don't think the order that would pay me anyway though. So.
You can't even get your parking validated.
Yeah, it's only been 18 years. I still have that $10. But I, I guess I just want to wish everybody in the community a happy holiday. How would they celebrate it, whatever their, their beliefs and faiths are and they can find some, some peace. It's been a very hard year in county government. It's been one of the more difficult years. I thought last year was, was, was tough. This was a brutal year for us. I'm hoping for a better year next year. We have a lot to do. But I just felt like, like last year, we were, we were always under siege at war, just in one battle after another. And I want to have a, I want to have a clearer path to getting things done next year without, without always feeling so stressed. And so I'm hoping to get, that everybody relaxes through a holiday season. We come back reinvigorated in January. We have, we have lots to do. I want to finish the 911 build. We got to get ready to train through the new equipment. The exterior of the building's done. The equipment should be arriving shortly. The new consoles, all the equipment. We have a lot of training to do, a lot of installation there to do. The drug task force building is, the exterior work's all been done. If you haven't been by there, it's all finished outside. I worked on the interior. Some of the design work there yesterday with Karen, I sent it back to the architects. I really wasn't pleased with what they were doing. They were trying to repurpose. I don't want to repurpose. I want to do the interior for the next 25 years. That's where the corner is going to be for the long haul. I don't want to make do. I want to make it work. I'm hoping to have that done in the spring along with the courthouse, although I'm really concerned that we still don't have a roof. It's the weirdest thing in the whole world. I'm trying to figure out where, where our roof is.
I ask Karen about that all the time.
It's, it is weird, isn't it?
They shipping it from.
It's watertight. They got it watertight, but I don't understand where the roof panels are.
Maybe Santa's bringing it for Christmas.
Maybe. The, the, I, I've worked with the police and fire chiefs on our, the be unveiled project we're going to do with them. They're, they're pretty excited, I think, so far. So I've met with a few folks on that. And so we'll be bringing forth that initiative to, to the general public, hopefully in January. So we have a lot of work yet to do here, but I'm, I'm hoping to have a big launch probably at the end of March, beginning of April. I think the public has a right to go through, see everything that, that's been done there. And so I'm pretty excited about that. And we have a lot of projects for next year that we're, we're going to work on. We, I promised Commissioner Kokoski a new dog kennel. So I got to work on that. And so I'm, I'm, I'm excited about the year. I just hope we, we can have a quieter year than, than last year with lawsuits and litigation and all the things that happened this year.
You know, in Columbus, one of the forums that I went to yesterday morning was about civility. So it's not just us. It's rampant throughout the whole state, probably the country too. But just the lack of mutual respect people have for each other and that civility is an issue all over the place. So let's not take it personal.
I don't take it personal, but it's just, it was just a very hard year on everybody last year. And the, the, we, we have a lot of things that need attending to and the list is extensive. And, and, and so we need to be able to turn our attention to those, those things rather than being distracted. And, and last year was a big year of distractions while we were still trying to attend to a lot of projects. So then to the community, they supported us very, very big in the elections for our, for our levy activities. I, I don't know that, that they're over being a little disturbed with us. I, I know they are still probably a bit. I think we still needed to do what we did. How we did it may have been in question. It's second-guessed judgment, but, but I know, most people realized that we needed to do something. And that is, the process was what bothered them, but it's not so much what, what, what we did. And they demonstrated that with their support, with the levies, with big support, amazing support. And I'm grateful for that support. And I want to thank them again for that. I want everybody to have a good holiday season. And I want to come back at our first meeting and, and show them that we're, we're, we're working hard for them. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ennis.
You look real good on the screen with the presents in the background. Looks like Santa Claus or something.
Just for the record, those are empty boxes. We did not spend the money on Christmas presents.
I do have a number of, before we go on the break, I just want to kind of update you on the status of several of our pending and imminent cases. Nothing long, but just to let you know what's happening over the next month.
He always has such good news for us.
Actually, I do have some good news.
Oh, good.
Commissioners report.
Um, no report. Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Looking forward to next year being a much brighter, calmer season.
Not going to recap the Commissioners' Conference or everything?
I don't even know where to start with that. That was, that was a long few days. A lot of walking. I think I blew my Fitbit up a couple of times. So it was good. It was good.
Commissioner Lundey and I attended last Wednesday evening, I think it was, a presentation on the Leadco Offshore Wind Project, moving forward on this, up to $50 million in Department of Energy money coming through on that project, hoping to be in the water by 2019 with construction and 2020 with wind turbines. Nowacka Governance Board met 8:30 Friday morning prior to our governing board meeting to finish up our slate of officers. Next month, we've moved forward with, County Executive Arm and Buddhist will be the new president of Nowacka next year. And we passed a lot of projects. Lorain County did very well in the year 2017 in regards to dollars for improvements, in regards to transportation. Tended the man-to-man Christmas party the other morning with both Commissioners. Thank you, Ray Noble, once again. It's been 20-plus years that you've held that, the support group for men in regards to prostate cancer.
And I baked.
And you baked. Commissioner Koski actually baked. I couldn't believe it. 13 years she actually baked something. I didn't know she could.
My goodness.
And it was good too, right?
It was very good. Yes, it was.
Was it like instant microwave baking?
No, I made cherry squares from scratch.
Oh, my goodness.
They were very.
I didn't believe her and then she read me the recipe.
I, I know by heart. I've made them lots of times.
Yeah, Ted thought she picked it up at the store and just put it in a box.
That's what I said.
She said no.
And then County Commissioners Association, successful conference once again. Congratulations to Dan Troy from Lake County, incoming president with his new slate of officers. A lot of discussion in regards to local government funds, indigent attorney fees. One of our priorities is a capital request from all the counties that we're including along with our capital requests locally. They're asking us about the elections equipment. 85% participation from the state in the capital project because all of our equipment is a decade old now at this point. So we're hoping to move forward with that. We've had some support from leadership in both houses that we should be able to get that done and move forward to the governor's desk next year when he does do the capital bill. Again, a lot of good learning throughout the conference. The algae bloom, algal bloom as the doctor from Stone Labs under OSU explained and how they're trying to address that in regards to our freshwater, smart cities initiatives, again legislative priorities, transportation. It was just a packed conference for a couple of days. So, and again, Merry Christmas to everyone. Also condolences to our county prosecutor, his mother-in-law passed this week. So again, it's been a good year, been a tough year. We've got a lot of things done with a lot of things we need to accomplish with everyone's help in the county. Call it a year. On to you, Commissioner Lundey.
Okay. Enjoyed attending the offshore wind discussion. Avon led good turnout for that. A lot of good questions and just excited to see that moving forward. I think it's really going to put Ohio on the map. It's going to help as a manufacturing state for us to be able to manufacture components of that. But it's a very exciting initiative. I know this county's been a major player in, in this initiative pretty much from the very beginning. So congratulations, North Ridgeville Chamber of Commerce. They held their holiday party, which is always a lot of fun. A lot of great local businesses there and the, and the business folks, just a great group of folks. Always a very entertaining time with them. Enjoyed the Lorain County Historical Society holiday party as well too at the Hickory's. Great turnout there. Always great, great food and just a really good group of folks to work with. And I, I have to tell you that they are very excited about the, the courthouse and the renovation work that's being done. And everybody kept saying, when's it going to be done? I want to get over there and, and be there for it. And as Jim said.
I keep asking where the roof is. They want to know when it'll be done.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So as Jim said, we're, we're definitely going to, you know, open the doors, give everybody a chance to, to see that. But I think it's just very exciting for the downtown, very exciting for the, for the community and, and something I think that we've wanted to do for, for a long time and now it's getting done. So Ray Noble, the man who keeps things going with this prostate cancer support group over at Mercy. Thanks, Ray, for reaching out to us and for putting on another nice event. The gentleman there and the, and their wives and spouses, just always a nice turnout there, great food and just good company, good conversation. Also had our ongoing discussions with, talking about the families transitioning from Puerto Rico to Lorain County. And we held that meeting at El Centro. Thought the meeting went very well. We have another one scheduled for January. The Lorain Democratic Women had their Christmas party last night. That was a very nice event. And also want to let everybody know again, I, I saw there's a letter to the editor in the paper today, our transit meeting, to go over what the consultants have brought back in the way of operating an effective and efficient transit system. That presentation will be at noon on Monday at the Transportation Center. And I just want to thank our staff for all the work that they've done during the course of the year. I think as the administrator pointed out, he's kind of the air traffic controller, making sure everybody stays on task and get things done. But it's, it's been a lot of heavy lifting this year. And I can't thank everybody enough for, for staying focused and getting things done. Really enjoy working with my colleagues here. I think that we always go out of our way to be reasonable and fair and work in partnership throughout the county to get projects done. And also want to thank our legal counsel, even though he doesn't always bring us the best news. But I still think Jerry's the hardest working legal guy in Lorain County. So amazing all the stuff he gets done. And Jim, thank you for all the work you've been doing. And I don't want to be leaving names out here, but the whole staff, Lisa, Tony, Sandy, in your office, the whole group, just every.
You're going to miss somebody.
I know. I'm going to miss people. I know. Don, Jerry. We love all of you. So, yeah. Happy holidays to everybody and, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
January 10th at 9:30 will be our Commissioners' First Meeting. At 11 o'clock, we'll have transportation improvement. Tuesday, the 16th will be our Stormwater District. 17th will be Commissioners' Board Meeting. The 18th, Matt had already stated that it's a transportation meeting.
Are we still having an organizational meeting, did you say?
It's all combined now in the 10.
Okay.
Yes. It was in the budget bill.
Right. Okay, that's what I thought, but it, okay.
That's the Monday, the 10th, right?
We're not doing the Monday. We're doing Wednesday.
We're starting new with Wednesday.
There is no Monday organizational.
There's no Monday organizational meeting.
The code doesn't call for that. They eliminate that.
It was in the budget bill.
Really? They changed the rules, yes, with the organization.
Wow. What, just this past budget?
Yeah, just finish it up. I was at a recap.
So that, that 200-year-old archaic.
It's January 10.
Law is over.
And nobody knew why it was there?
Correct, is over with.
Oh, right. We finally.
We're merging.
Wow.
Evolving, I mean.
Yeah, we don't have to have the.
Progress. Look at that. Look at that.
Second Monday of the new year.
Look at that.
Mandated organizational meeting.
It was like, nobody knew why it was even there anymore. It was, it's, okay, cool bees.
So on the 19th, we'll have our land bank meeting. The 23rd will be investment. And the State of Ohio mileage again this year is 52 cents for correspondence.
And will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Do you want to brag about winning Family Feud or anything?
I don't know, not really.
No.
I mean, we did win. As clerks, we won the Family Feud down there, yes.
I haven't been to the CCO in 10 years.
Oh, you missed a good time.
They talked poorly about you though this time, right, Lund?
I mean, you'd only surprise. The, what, one of the questions was which county, five, five counties border Lake Erie? Of course us. Of course. Cuyahoga was not listed. One of the persons from Ashtabula County, a commissioner said Sandusky County. And we went, what?
Sandusky County.
It was on there though. It was an answer, but it was not.
Well, I can tell you that.
Sandusky County doesn't quite touch.
I, I am probably the.
You posted Cedar Point though.
Senior ranking county administrator in the state of Ohio. And I do not go sit with my peers for a reason.
Maybe you can teach him a few things.
That's, the.
I don't know. Dave Lehrer's been with Geogas as long as I can remember.
Dave Lehrer has, has got less time than me. He's, he was a former township trustee.
Okay.
Dave's a decent enough guy. I mean, I know, I know several of them. But they usually get together at 10 o'clock. They're, they're chewing on some bagels and then they go in, they yak and they go into lunch and they gripe and complain and they adjourn at 2 o'clock[1688.11] they adjourn at two o'clock, and they don't do anything productive, and quite frankly, I'd rather be here serving the taxpayers of Lorain County with some productive work. So I stopped going down there, what, about ten years ago?
Yeah, probably.
The, the, but normally this, you know, tenure of county administrators is about seven or eight years, is, you know, so I've been doing this eighteen years now. So I'm getting a little long in the fang, but, and thanks for having me. I don't take it for granted.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning? Last opportunity before next year, seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by both the county administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.